I'd like to call this meeting to order. Need a approval of the candidate agenda? I'll second, on favor. Any moving?
Number 11. Two, all regular meetings right on 42-5, 49, number 111, two classes. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Helgivold, approve the tentative agenda with the correction of item number eight, wellness program. Twenty twenty-three dash four. Four, three, minutes of approved regular meetings. Four months. For on the group. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Helgivold, approve the month. Right on. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Helgivold, approve resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-three, a resolution for public purpose for safety training. By Will Campbell, eyes, two, Rasmussen and Helgivold, nine, resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-three, duty tablet and means follow. There you can meet the full resolution on safety training. Motion by Helgivold, second by Rasmussen, approve resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-three, a resolution of public purpose wellness program incentive. By Will Campbell, eyes, two, Rasmussen and Helgivold, nine, resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-three, duty tablet and means follow. And not be. Jeremy Adams, this is the right county bureau, gave an update that year when the work was completed. These are in brush and burning ditch. Two towns have been done, towns have been completed, including a movie. One step, one point. Later out, waiting to weather the weather. Auditor Ellis went over a letter from the United States Association of County Health Insurance Rates for this year's ten twenty-two five. The overall premium is coming on each single plan and at five points five percent and on a family plan for five to seven point six. The rate for this claim will be increased. This is a page, we side stunt, continue to work. And others. This does for action to be taken on next week's meeting. The library association, that should give an annual update on the board.
Chad Chapman discussed what the libraries have used the contributions for their accomplishments and activities they hold at the libraries. They're requesting a four percent funding increase for a total of one hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and and also a one thousand dollar stipend for technology to each library. This will be considered a. Motion by Helgivold, seconded by Rasmussen, to adjourn the meeting, motion carries. The board will hold a work session at the public health building for a fair reminder.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they stand approved as read. Claims have been around and signed? Anyone from the public? For open forum?
Only thing I got is Merry Christmas, have a Happy New Year.
Yeah, you too, Bob. Okay, moving on, Adam Clemmons.
Quick update, uh, guys are out still cutting brush on granite routes, uh, both blades and, uh, trucks, they've been burning ditches also to help if any of that white stuff starts to fall. Um, they completed a hundred work orders last week, so ninety-four, uh, brush cuts, you can see that on the map right there. We're doing township by township, so we've done approximately three hundred and fifty-one miles of, uh, we've gone over.
Looks good where they've been.
Yeah, yep, so guys are doing a lot of work that way, so seven out of the sixteen townships have been completed. Um, so we're gonna keep going, uh, we're still, Norway has a lot up in, uh, that area, so that'll take some time, but, uh, we'll keep going with the tiers and, uh, finish off them.
Is it how often, is it every year or so?
We try to brush cut as much as possible, um, this one's just been, I don't know, uh, we just had a lot of brush grow, so.
Well, you've had beautiful weather to do it. Normally you're not.
We get cut off at some point, yeah, last year, I mean, we were, so, 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 that's, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move down to number eight, as number seven is, I. Review and act on resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-four for addition to previous resolutions on disbursement of funds for the American Rescue Plan.
You're reading?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-four, addition to the original resolution twenty-two-two dash fourteen, twenty-two-two dash thirty-five, and twenty-two-three dash nineteen, to approve dispersments of funds for the American Rescue Plan Act. Whereas on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, President Biden signed the one hundred and nine trillion dollar American Rescue Plan Act, and whereas Wright County applied for and has been um, estimated to receive funds for the American Rescue Plan Act, totaling two point four, two million, four hundred and forty thousand, twenty-one dollars. Whereas based on the distribution guidelines from the U.S. Department of Treasury, the following projects have been approved for the use of said funds, renovation of the public, public health building not to exceed seventy-five thousand. Be resolved that the Wright County Board of Supervisors endorses the dispersments of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for the items listed and authorizes the auditor to make his payments as they are presented. Fast and approved this eighteenth day of December, twenty-twenty-three.
The, uh, I think it's billion, not trillion.
It's country, I mean, it's the whole country, yeah. Oh, look it up.
Yeah.
You wanted, uh, wait on?
No, I mean, uh, we'll just correct that.
Your fraction of the.
Well, until by the end of today, I mean, by the end of the meeting, we'll know what that number is.
Okay, I need to make a most, I need to make a most to approve resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-four.
Can you tell me, uh, is that because we did, we've done changes to the amounts?
Yes, this is just the addition of the seventy-five thousand dollars for the public health building.
Okay. Got it.
Didn't put anything in the previous resolutions concerning the public health building, so. And, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, Carl.
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All ayes. Those are not your meetings. I have, uh, well, I've been meeting with work boards or not. The people who were on the workforce board at the time, I've been meeting with them over Helga County on an issue taking care of, trying to take care of. And then I've got, uh, Eldora meeting this Friday. Other than that, nothing else.
I think I'm in development this weekend, or the, last week, uh, just touched base on a couple of things that you were, you were doing with the, uh, marketing fund, but, uh, there's not, not a lot, anything you had on that?
I have a building families meeting this afternoon, uh, at three o'clock that I'll zoom into. Other than that, the weather is nice down here in Branson.
Elga County at this time? Any other business? Any new business? If not, we'll be in recess till nine fourteen. Okay, we're back in session. Uh, Ryan Urban?
You got it?
Sweet. With Assured Partners, you present health insurance renewal, and we need to review and act on health insurance rates for fiscal year twenty-two-five.
We have Dean as our winner?
He's online.
But you can leave a book for him.
Okay. Let me give this to, uh, just to follow along, as I was saying, that, that, uh. Morning.
Morning.
Sorry, Ryan.
No worries.
Nice sweater, Deb.
Thank you. Um, missing your ugly Christmas sweater this year, Dean.
Next year.
Take a picture of us.
I hope you're somewhere warm, Dean.
I am indeed.
Are you? Okay, good.
You know, you can put on a Christmas sweater and just email me your picture, and then I can make a star for you.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I already hit it. Oh, yeah, I did.
I don't like going watching, go like, good night.
Oh, you know. All right, good morning, everybody, uh, my name is Brian Urban with Assured Partners, and we're gonna review your employee benefits renewal for fiscal year twenty-five, so this re- renews July first of next year. ISAC set the renewal rates before Thanksgiving with the completion of fiscal year twenty-three. Finalizing fiscal year twenty-three, they ran about two million dollars under budget. So that two million dollar under budget got rolled forward, and so the base rate increase for fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five was zero percent, so that was the trend for this, uh, select pool. Trend in the market certainly is much higher, um, and average is sixty-eight percent depending on the size and carrier, uh, and state in which you're doing business, but that's a good average. ISAC ran so much better than we had projected for fiscal year twenty-three, so we were at a zero percent on base rate. Um, if you open up your book, pass up a folder cover, we have a table of contents. We're gonna just, a quick review of fiscal year twenty-five highlights, a compen- compensation disclosure of our agency, uh, with your county. However, we don't have any products written directly with your county, everything goes through ISAC. Uh, and then we have your medical vision, and then a voluntary benefits review on tab five. The next page is our benefit management team, I'm on the left-hand side, we have a, a client support service team in the middle, and then Samantha does all of our marketing.
I, I will say just a little tidbit in there, Lisa Reinhardt is amazing.
Yeah, thank you.
She is so helpful.
I'll make sure to pass that on. Very good, thanks, Deb. Okay, and then this next page, your fiscal year twenty-five renewal forecast. So for your health plan, although the ISAC base rate was zero, your county lost some discounts because of our three-year average loss ratio was increased, and so you had a five point seven percent overall renewal, I will look at specifics here in just a moment. Your vision's in a rate guarantee, the accident plan with reliance standard is moving to Voya, effective one-one. Uh, so there's a, a new four-year rate guarantee on that product, and then any employees that were buying coverage, uh, for additional coverage for their spouse and, and/or kids are going to see rate decreases effective January first as well from that prior coverage. Also new for January first is a new product, uh, critical illness benefit also with Voya, because ISAC had a premium reduction by changing carriers, they're paying for an additional benefit for all employees enrolled in the health plan, and we'll look at a review here in a moment. And then we also have a voluntary accidental death and dismemberment benefit with reliance standards through ISAC, and that's also in a rate guarantee.
And that is staying with reliance standard?
Yeah, yeah, that one's staying, yeah, Voya just doesn't rate that line of coverage, so.
Okay.
All right, if we wanna go to tab one? A, a review of the ISAC benefits program, the health program in the upper left-hand corner. Uh, that first bullet point really is the, the biggest reason counties continue, uh, to want to join ISAC and, and continue with the program, we're, we're able to go through renewal rates before you set your budgets. So I've talked to thirty-five to forty counties in the last thirty days, if I haven't met with them in person, I've certainly talked to them as they work with department heads on starting their budget conversations. Uh, the dental program is strong, vision as well, which you're a part of. Um, and then on the right-hand side, the complimentary ISAC benefits, they pay for a comprehensive wellness program, including an employee assistance program, the accident and critical illness benefits that all employees enrolled in the medical will get no cost. Cobra administration's included, so there's no outside fee, I think your county does it a little bit differently because you have some products outside of ISAC. But they do offer that service and then consolidated billing. And then also at the bottom right-hand corner of the Assured Partners, there's no consulting fee billed to the county, that's all paid, uh, directly by ISAC to our firms, so. To flip the page, a review of the twenty-two-four wellness program. Your county's done great with this, they've gotten all five percent the last few years. Uh, it looks very similar to twenty-two-three, it starts in January and then runs through the end of October. The county can get up to four percent, uh, of discount, if we have eighty percent of employees get their physical and complete the back form, so that's the exact same as twenty-two-three, along with the online assessment, so if we have fifty percent completion, it's another percent for a total of five. And then at the bottom there, under the employee incentives, uh, the employee can get a hundred dollar reimbursement, uh, from getting a physical, and that will be paid by the accident policy, so from Voya for twenty-two-four, that's up from seventy-five today, so seventy-five was the core plan wellness benefit, it's increasing to a hundred. And then twenty-five for the assessment, and then the walking challenge, ten thousand steps a day, two hundred and forty-three maximum days, so two hundred and forty-three dollar benefit. They've had a high level, ISAC paid, I think, over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a hundred and twenty thousand days of members that did reach ten thousand steps, so we had great participation with that program. For twenty-two-three. And then this last flyer in this section is your Care Ridge EAP, uh, just member information flyer, so we just need to make sure employees understand they have this benefit, it's at no cost to them, it sits in front of their health plan, and they can use it for up to three issues per circumstance per year, so, um, you can also download, download the smartphone app and talk with a therapist almost immediately. Um, if there's a crisis situation, so again, just make sure that employees know they have this benefit. Uh, tab two is our compensation and deed of closure statement. And this is something that the Fed's required, uh, as a new law, as a part of the twenty-twenty-one legislative law that was passed. Um, all brokers should even disclosing to prospects and current clients how they get paid by line of coverage. You go to page three of seven, there's no products that we have directly with the county, so everything that you participate in is going through ISAC, and so we have a compensation disclosure with them. Uh, but there's no fees that our county is, is charging you directly. Okay. Tab three. This first page is the rate adjustment utilization key for your medical renewal. And in the upper left-hand corner, we start with the last three years that we're reviewing, so we're looking from year twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three in the upper left-hand corner. You can see the collected premium by year and then the total expense, and then that county use rate is essentially a loss ratio. So we start at ninety-four, one-twenty, and one-oh-six, so we have a one-oh-seven average. And if you look on the key to the right, that puts you within the base rate, uh, criteria. For the fiscal year twenty-four that we're currently in, your three-year average was ninety-five point eight percent, so you were in a negative five percent discount. So because the ISAC base rate was zero, your county is going from the base rate, um, excuse me, going from a level one discount to the base rate, so that's a, in, in essence, a five percent penalty or a five percent increase. Because that three-year on, on ratio is, has gotten worse. Does that make sense on the top? The middle section is for large claims, so ISAC has, we're a self-funded health plan at the association level, and we buy stop-loss. Uh, there's a two hundred thousand dollar deductible that we purchase as the association for about six thousand members. The stop-loss premium is what is a pass-through that ISAC pays on behalf of your membership. Um, you can see the amounts listed by fiscal year, those amounts are included in your collected premium above, so you're just seeing the transparent portion of this. And then also showing the stop-loss credits. So we've had no, no members, employees, spouses, kids that have exceeded two hundred thousand dollars for each year. So that puts you at a negative two and a half percent discount, uh, or the max that you can receive. We then go down to the bottom, under the combined discount ratio, so we have the current year twenty-four, renewal twenty-five, we start at the ISAC base rate on the left-hand side. Remember, that's not changing for next year, so your experience goes from a negative five to a zero, and then you kept your two and a half and five percent wellness discount. So you go from eighty-seven point five of base to ninety-two point five of base rate. This next page is the Wellmark report. Uh, we just wanted to include some additional reporting for transparency, and this is gonna match up with your total expense on the prior page under fiscal year twenty-three. So on, on the left to right, starting with the settled date, so we're looking at the fiscal year starting July of twenty-two through June of twenty-three, but then also including three months of runout, medical claims don't process and pay immediately, so there's a lag, and so we include ninety days of runout claims to show you the full, uh, mature contract. So we start with covered charge of just about, above four point three million, that's what providers submitted to Wellmark. Then the discount that they received by being a part of the network was just over two point five million. You then have to reduce the employee's deductible and out-of-pocket, which, remember, the plan that we're buying from Wellmark has a pretty high out-of-pocket, I think at sixty-eight fifty. So you get down to a net pay of a million, three seventy-nine. You then add back in the pass-through expenses that ISAC pays on your behalf. And you can see the administration fee, the stop-loss premium for individual, which is specific, and then the stop-loss premium for aggregate, which is for the entire group. Do you take your net claims paid plus your admin fees plus your stop-loss, that will total a million, five seventy-nine, which almost matches exactly to the total expense on the prior page for fiscal year twenty-three. Okay, the next page will then be a review of your current renewal plan with ISAC. And the total premium shown at the top, that's the total premium for the employee and employer, it's hard to show this because we have multiple partial self-fund plans, all with different employee contributions. Um, but for plan eleven C, we show the benefit with a five thousand dollar single deductible, ten thousand family, twenty percent co-insurance to sixty-eight fifty and thirteen seven. We have the medical copay shown, and for most of them, it's deductible waived, twenty percent co-insurance. And then your pharmacy benefit with a three-tiered benefit for non-specialty, and then a seventy-five and one-fifty specialty copay for preferred and non-preferred. And you can see your two-tier premiums from ISAC listed, the current seven forty-four, sixteen seventy-two, renewing to seventy, so seventeen sixty-eight. We also include just above the employer annual cost, the budgeted HRA, um, and, and you have the Bob with Oxyant, so that amount is just a guess, it's twenty-five percent of the risk, it's probably fairly close, um, but if anything, it's a little bit high. As a budget item. You go to the next page. This is your partial self-fund reserve analysis. And under the county premium at the bottom, under current, you'll see your five hundred dollar plan premiums, the seven fifty and a thousand. You'll, and you're also gonna see the enrollment by plan for single family. And again, that's on the bottom left-hand corner. So under option one at the top, if we have a zero percent premium change with your partial self-fund, um, you're gonna start at two hundred and seventy-one thousand, and you're gonna end at three fifty-four, so you're gonna see your reserve grow without making a premium change. Um, I did speak with Deb, and option three is, is some numbers that she's using initially for a budget item, it's pretty close, it's not exactly, uh, an exact match to her numbers, but it is very close. Um, and that's a five percent overall increase, which then, uh, is a more significant increase to your reserve. Here, this where you don't have to make any change, but if you wanna make a change to continue, continue to see that reserve increase, you certainly can. Any questions on that? Okay.
Um. I was waiting to see if there were any questions, so the paper that I handed out kind of goes with this as far as the, our plans, health insurance with the employee pay would be. So on the first page, it shows a increase by the family plan of thirteen dollars and fifty cents per month, and an increase on the single plan of five dollars per month, and increase of the side fund by ten dollars across the board. Page two shows everything the same except the single phone increased by ten dollars instead of five. So you can see on the bottom what the employee would pay and what the county cost would be per employee per month. Okay, you can continue.
And then the last page in this section is the entire grid from ISAC of all the plans that you can purchase. Um, your plan is boxed in red at the bottom, planning eleven C on the left-hand side. Uh, just to note, plan sixteen will be a similar plan, but on a slightly different network, so you currently have the national PPO network within Wellmark. Plan sixteen is the Wellmark point of service, so it's a hybrid between the Iowa HMO for Iowa claims and then the PPO for non-Iowa claims. You can still go to mail with this network, that's always the big question. However, any claims outside of Iowa process under the out-of-network benefit, so you lose your copay for that deductible with co-insurance for office visits. But it is about a seventy-eight percent, uh, savings and premium, uh, to do that. There are some competing trusts that offer plans to counties, but that's the only network that they offer, and so I just always wanna point that out, that, um, ISAC does have that same benefit that can be offered.
Are there any other counties that are using sixteen?
Uh, yeah, no other counties this far north, um, but there are some counties more in central Iowa that are.
Good.
Yeah, any, yeah, it seems like if you get above Highway twenty, groups want the national network because they have more mail utilization, but, um, Adair County, Benton County, we do have three or four counties now on the point-of-service network, Dean.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, then go to tab four, this is just gonna be a review of your vision renewal, um, and it's actually, it's in a rate guarantee, so there's no change uh, in, in premium or in benefit, you have the Avisus one-fifty plan, which is the best plan ISAC offers. Uh, deductible, excuse me, the, the copay's ten dollars for your exam, and then it's a hundred and fifty dollar allowance for frames every two years, contacts every year, that same hundred and fifty dollar allowance. And but what's unique about this plan is the standard progressive benefit is no charge, along with most of the lens enhancements. So that's quite an improvement over a lot of the vision plans that are sold, um, where we have no charge for a lot of those services. But it's the same premium, so that will just roll over for July first. Then your last section is, uh, tab five, we have the accident insurance review with Voya. It's a very similar program to Reliance, um, with some small differences. At the very bottom of this page, you're gonna see in the middle section, twenty-four hour coverage, so this is a change and it's an improvement. Uh, the current reliance benefit is off the job only, so if you're injured on the job and you seek treatment, uh, within the required timeframe, on the job, it's gonna be excluded from coverage with Reliance, with Voya, it's also going to be covered. So you can have workers' compensation cover your, your injury expenses and also get paid from Voya. Uh, so I just wanna make sure that was clear, and then the wellness benefit, like I mentioned, is increasing from seventy-five dollars on the core plan to a hundred, so that's an improvement. And then you can see the premiums listed on the right-hand side for the monthly comp, um, and we've reviewed this with your auditors' office, so they understand the, the payroll deductions to, to start January first. On the backside of this sheet, there's the actual review of benefits for the core and enhanced plans. Uh, another improvement just above that is the sports accident benefit, so if you have any organized sport, have kids playing sports and they get hurt, it's an additional up to a twenty-five percent benefit on the payouts showing below, up to an additional thousand dollars. So for employees with kids, this is a really awesome benefit, um, it's not if, it's when they get injured from playing sports, and uh, it's nice to have this reimbursement when they have to use their health plan and have some out-of-pocket expenses. And then on the right-hand side, we have the ISAC, the new ISAC paid critical illness insurance, so this is gonna be a five thousand dollar benefit for all employees enrolled in the health plan, and then employees that are waiting in the health plan can certainly purchase this at their cost. Um, under the schedule of benefits, you can see the percentage of the five thousand that would be paid in the event of a diagnosis, so these are for serious illnesses. Um, a heart attack, cancer, brain tumor, stroke, organ transplant, all of those items would be reimbursing the full five thousand dollars back to the employee. You can have recurrence of the same diagnosis up to ten times, so it can, it, it pays more than, than just the five thousand dollar benefit. If you have cancer, you go into remission, you get diagnosed again, that would trigger the benefit to pay. And then in July, what we have a buy-up option coming for employees, so they can purchase additional critical illness at their own cost. And then in July, what we have a buy-up option coming for employees, so they can purchase additional critical illness at their own cost. Uh, but what's unique about that with Voya, it's all going to be the same rates for all employees regardless of their age. Typically, critical illness is sold in age band, so as you age, it gets more significantly more expensive. Um, it's going to be a very attractive benefit for employees above an average age of about forty years old. It becomes uh much less expensive than the Reliance standard option today. And the last benefit that we have is the voluntary accidental death of this memberment with Reliance. This is same with Reliance standard, and there's no change in the benefit design or the premium. Uh, you can buy this in twenty-five thousand dollar increments from twenty-five up to two hundred and fifty thousand. And then on the backside of the sheet, you can buy this for yourself, your family or the employee plus child. And it's based on uh the volume of purchase. Any questions?
Do you go out and do uh? Uh, employee training or go out and talk to a place that we have uh secondary loans first thing in the morning at seven thirty? Will you come and go over all of this?
We're doing virtual training in January.
Okay.
Yep, so we're going to be sending out an email here soon, um with some different options. And then we're also going to record it and send it to them. You'll have a copy of that. Yep, yep, that that's coming here shortly. Any questions, Rob?
Um, on the list. Um, of the letter, all the different counties that are with ISAC.
Yep.
Um, there's a lot of eleven E Cs and eleven Es. After seeing and doing a breakdown for Wright County. Besides Plan sixteen, is there any other options that you can think of that maybe be a benefit to the county?
That the plan you're on is the lowest cost plan with the national network. Um, the other, the other plan to note is Plan sixteen, where you would change the network slightly. There's really no other option that's going to give you a lower premium. Um, other than Plan eleven F. Plan eleven F is the H M O only, so that would be access to Iowa providers, if you need Iowa, that's not. So if I was ever going to make a change, I would have to move over to Plan sixteen, because it's the hybrid. You kind of get the best of both. You get the Iowa H M O for Iowa claims. You still have the P P O for out of Iowa. But that's, that's really the only other option to save money.
So, so if somebody was to um be in Missouri and get sick and they go to the the clinic.
Yep.
You would not get your, that would not go to the deductible. That, how would that, how would that billing go?
Yeah, so you're not. Let's say we had a Plan sixteen for all of our employees. Any claims outside of Iowa that did not take place in the Iowa H M O with process out of network. However, ISAC has the same deductible and out-of-pocket, so that five thousand doesn't change and the sixty-eight fifty doesn't change. So you, employees would get all of that credit towards their Augient plan.
Mm-hmm.
So it'd go towards their Augient deductible and out-of-pocket maximum. But the health plan through ISAC would not waive the deductible and twenty percent co-insurance. So for an office visit, if it's a hundred and fifty dollar visit, employees pay thirty dollars today, twenty percent. They would pay the whole one fifty. That one fifty would then go towards your Augient out-of-pocket maximum. So it's, you still get coverage for it. You just lose the deductible waived portion. Yeah. We've had, I would say very few issues with groups that have moved to that network. Um, in Iowa, the other uh what you're going to disruption is chiropractic access. So some chiropractors that are in the P P O today are not in the H M O and they can't be in the H M O. There's just no way to get them in. Um, so some folks would lose access or they'd lose their deductible waived benefit for their record. That's typically the, the one that annoys employees the most.
How would that affect the side fund? On the, on the network deductible?
You'd still get credit for it, so it's still going to come through the file feed and it's just going to apply to your. Your, your buy-down deductible and out-of-pocket max. They can't really differentiate on the, the claim file that comes through. It just goes right towards your. They're the same, exactly. Yep. Yep, and we, we built that plan that way, so in the case that we had out-of-state claims, they would still go towards that same partial self-fund. Deductible and out-of-pocket. Typically, on point of service plans, you double the deductible and out-of-pocket if you're out of network, but we didn't do that with ISAC. Because of all the.
Oh, then also, like I'm just saying on here, are there a lot of counties that are changing? Because right now I see only one county with Van Buren and and Plan sixteen. And then there's Adair and Benton in Plant seventeen.
Yeah, so those are the three groups that I could think of that I mentioned when Dean asked that question. Yeah, there's, there's not a lot of groups that have done this yet. Uh, with the renewals that most counties are getting this year, I, I don't see much change. I see them renewing as is for the most part. But I, I think it's a good practice to at least consider and understand the point of service network if at some point you want to make that change. Um, again, it's chiropractic access, access inside of Iowa. Outside of Iowa, you would get deductible waived.
And then is, are most, all of these counties then partially self-funding?
Almost everyone. Yep, yep, so that's a pretty common practice as well. Yeah, and that's where you can save money and that's where your county's done a good job and you've been doing that for quite a while. Yep. If you were paying the premiums for the old five hundred dollar deductible plans, it'd be much more. We've actually eliminated those plans because no one has them anymore.
Well, thirteen is.
That's on the H M O, so that's not the national network. We used to have a plan eight and nine and now they're gone. Yeah. Yeah, they've all left those plans because of cost. Yeah, it's good questions. Okay, that's all I got. Any, you know, follow up questions, feel free to to email me.
Any questions, Dean?
Nope, none.
Thank you. All right, yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, Joe Herrick to discuss trees. Do you want to act on the health insurance rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-five?
Make a motion to act on it, presented?
I'll second.
And then that with the single plan being at fifty-five dollars or?
I would go with the second one, the raise it, yeah, for the single.
Okay.
Right, that builds our side fund, correct?
Correct.
Well.
Um, both of them do the, the single person, instead of paying fifty dollars out of pocket. The single person would pay sixty dollars out of pocket.
I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
The five from the time for, okay. So this will be the option two?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Oh, favor. I, all eyes.
The, the motion is to go with the option two. Oh.
Um, I mean, the motion that you said, I believe.
Yeah.
Can you say, Dean, you second that?
I did indeed.
Okay, Joe Herrick to discuss trees in D D seven, Blaine Township. And Blaine with twenty-seven, he's right.
Am I good to pull up the PowerPoint with you?
Yeah. You figure it out.
Oh, I'd use a Google Docs or Slides.
Okay.
Right. Which isn't a huge deal. It's all in here for the most part, but. There is a couple extra pictures. Oh, Dean can see that.
Yeah, we can share.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Let's go all the way to slides first. Where, uh, the hills, uh, just type slides in and it'll. Yeah, there it is, yeah. Look at that.
Are you going to share that?
Yeah.
Well, it's very, very, all us would say.
Yeah.
Nice sweater, Courtney.
Thank you. I was just texting and I looked up and it's like, oh, there she is. Never mind.
I'm going to hear it again.
If you scroll down, I say try it out.
Thank you. Then you'll have to.
Andy wants to share that on the Zoom.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
Okay, got it.
There you go.
The arrows or the dogs?
To the top ones.
All right, so we got more victories. Dallas this time. Right, uh, piece of the tree farm. Now it shouldn't work. All right, so first off, I want to say I uh did not make it to ninety lateral one. And um. So typically, I've gone in through this uh. Access for this duck pond here and I float that canal and float across the lake in a canoe. For the little, you know, marsh pond and go up the ditch, but uh it was completely dry this year. And it was uh still dammed up here and somewhat flooded through there. Um, it just was, you know, nothing in the lake. I debated on trying to dirt bike across it, but I didn't want to, you know, find the marshy wet ground again with my dirt bike out there and. Yep, so um. Figure next year I'll try to. That is just north of Pipes Timber. Sorry, so this is the blacktop going to highway sixty-nine and then Lake Cornelia would be. Or no, sorry, that's the gravel road just north of the blacktop. So. Cambiar River Access would be over here. I don't have a better map to show you on here, I guess, but uh. Yeah, so typically, I really don't see much through there. Um, it's all wet, swampy, uh, you know, nothing can really grow. There was some willows. Through here, I think possibly. Otherwise, I really didn't see much. But next year, my, what's that?
That's the Nelson Farm that's in, uh, depicted in that picture, I believe.
I am not for sure there.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one that we pulled up, Dean.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, why are you cutting and spending money cutting trees out of a marsh?
Well, we don't do in the pond. I, I just know that this was a, a ditch on my list when I started.
Yeah.
And it, I mean, it's a, you can tell where it goes back to the ditch out of the pond or whatever. So, but I was meaning to talk to you about, I guess, how you feel about it and mainly before I drove my dirt bike out there, isn't it? See if you thought I was crazy or.
There's no reason to go out there. I mean, it's, it's flooded. It, it's a marsh. It's. That's an expensive dollars that Dean's just going to be upset about because the D N, the Fish and Wildlife Service is not going to pay.
Their portion.
Their portion.
Yeah, which I would prefer if that's what we're going with, that's.
And the same with the south of the tracks there. The D N R went in and ate up all the willows in there. And ground them down and stuff. I just don't see why. You're spending money on this property.
So the only thing I can see is uh. Depending on what drainage goes through there, it does have dams. I know we talked that if you ask to get trees gone before you take the one closest to the river out. But.
It, there again, there again. There's no farmer's tile that is impacted.
Okay.
By the beaver dams. There's a concrete dam that the Fish and Wildlife Service put in that's a control structure to hold water back. So there again, I don't understand why. You're spending money on this.
But that's just my opinion. This one's not very fun for me, so it's up to you guys on that, but.
Okay, I'd say, I would say that it is a no, and uh unless we were to get. Uh, some input that, but again, it's into a marsh. I would think that anything that's on there has been outletted to the surface. Uh, to maintain the marsh if we had a normal, normal year.
So to you guys, I guess if, are you wanting to take it off rotation then?
Yes.
Okay, that, that works out, I guess, for that. Well. Is there some else to them?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so now we are outside of Dallas. Um, the tree farm would be over here when you drive by. Um. So seven starts here. You can kind of see it. And then right here is where these trees are. Oh, all right, so how do I go back?
Oh, just uh right-clicking.
I drove out and looked at that uh last uh.
Is there a way to go back?
I don't, last week sometime. Um, and the Sumax that are encroaching down into the ditch. Um, I would be interested in having those uh cleaned up, but as far as the big cottonwoods. Um.
That's all right.
You know, I, I didn't see any tile outlets into the open ditch in that area. I walked it. Um, not on the north or not on the south side. I walked it on the north side. Um. So I, I think we can leave those cottonwoods alone.
Good.
Just go out from the Sumac then, Dean?
Uh, just the Sumac that's on the. On the dredge, on the bank of the dredge ditch.
Oh, really? Oh, there, yeah, all right, so. This is what I was looking at if I did do um the big trees too, which is probably a little more than twenty foot out in the working. I put twenty foot out. But uh, that'd be the cottonwoods and then the Sumax. And then I did talk to the co-op. Um, you can't really see the bottom. You can see how there is little trees on the tracks and the Sumax are fighting them too. So I was hoping they would say that they'll spread or let me spray those. Uh. One of my friends has a drone, so he can come and hit them and. And then hopefully we'll be done fighting them. On both sides. So the cottonwoods, that one dropped, um, it's slim and it, it didn't go like. In in with a lot of weight. There's branches in, but for the most part, yeah, the other side should fall away, I guess. But. There's one that's over twenty foot away. I would say it's, you know, twenty-five at least from the bank. Otherwise, they're all within that easement. But I guess, yeah, it's a matter of which way do they fall.
Yeah, and again, I didn't, I didn't see any outlets, any tile outlets. You know, basically you've got the. The railroad tracks to the south. Um, you have to work, walk further west on that, uh, ditch. In order to, to find tile, tiles that outlet into the ditch. Or further east from that, there's that triangle in between the tracks and the dredge ditch that nobody's farming that is, you know. Grown up into, I don't know, it looks like good deer habitat to me, but the Sumax. Um, where they're, where they're starting to go down the ditch bank, I would like to have those cleaned up.
Right, and those are basically dead for the most part. I have, um, so. You can see how tall the Sumax are, that's, cars there, and then. Yep, the big trees as far as, uh. These are, I basically count these as two trees because from six foot up, it's a completely different tree. Alright, so here's the Sumax. So you can see the ones that fruited out for the most part. And then when you get to the ditch, I do have it all sprayed. Like, these are all ready to just step on and they'll snap off.
Right, and I did notice that they hadn't fruited, so.
Yep, and then I do need to get it pushed back a little further, but I was hoping to just clear that whole area and. I don't know, and then if the co-op would spray their side, it would be, it would be really nice if they were just all gone.
Yeah, the, uh, I think anytime that you would have a clean out, uh, you would pull the spoils to the. To the north side of the bank anyway. So as long as you're keeping those sprayed so that, uh, they aren't spreading.
Right.
I'm good with that.
So there is a bunch of cottonwoods on the other side of the ditch for some reason. I don't know if you noticed, they're, they're curled up now, but they're. And there's a few hundred and it was really weird because they were like six inches to three foot tops and they just. I'm, I get, I'm assuming they're coming from these trees blowing across, but they're sprayable. They're not like going to get out of control. But that was one thing I was hoping to get rid of too. You know, so this is what the last one turned out to be and I put the biggest chunk on top. There's a decent sized one there, but I had one bigger than that that I put right on top. So I put all the brush down, put all the logs and teepee around it and. Built their own fire department and they told me to call Clarion, so they, uh, didn't want to deal with it, I guess. Oh, oh, man.
So Dean, did you go out and take a look at this area?
Uh, of the one that you just took the pictures of, yes, I did. The. The Blaine Township section. Twenty-seven, I have not been out there yet.
That's not Blaine twenty-seven?
That is not Blaine twenty-seven. That is, uh. Oh.
Oh, sorry, the pile of the logs. Yeah, no, that's all gone. That was just an example of what.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Oh, yeah, those are gone. That was last year's job. So that was just an example to show you guys what it ends up looking like.
So Dean, you did go to Blaine to the Dallas, but the pictures that you, he was showing, you did go and walk all of that?
I did.
Okay. Perfect.
And your recommendation is just the Sumac and not worry about the big trees because we've got no intakes right there.
This, uh, yes, and as Joey said, he's already treated those. You could tell that the ones on the, on the ditch bank. Um, they had not fruited like you, like was obvious. Go to the next slide back, Joey. That shows the fruits, yeah. See the little black tops on those Sumax? On the left side of that slide and you don't see it on the ditch bank side.
So here's a closer version, but yeah, it's a little ways out of the bank before you start seeing them.
Yeah.
So there, yeah, pretty much contained. It was just once those big trees were gone, it'd be nice to get them really pushed back. But.
What are you spraying them with?
Uh, right now it's, um, Darlon three A and then it was cross pretty much, um. Got to be labeled non-irrigation drainage bank or something like that. So I can't just spray it or on or anything. But. Yep, and then.
Eric, do you have a product that you like to use on Sumac?
Uh, we don't, Sumac is so prolific in places. I mean, it.
They have erosion control.
Yeah, I mean, it controls the erosion. I don't know what's underneath there for, you know. For erosion control once he kills it. So.
The, there was still, uh, grass, you know, the, that is intermixed. The bank was stable. I mean, that's why I went out there and walked it to see if there was issues, uh, in bank stabilization.
Right, I was mainly worried they were just going to be falling down here for too long, but. And where they're going to end up, but it is, I guess, yeah, um. I need to double check what landowner owns that up in between because it is kind of a triangle between the county easement and the co-op tracks.
Yep.
Not for sure who that is. But.
It, I don't recall and I don't have a plot book in front of me, but it's, uh, it's very close to Patterson's house. I don't know if it's their ground or not.
Right, it is right behind Patterson's. But if you guys were to have me do all the work. Is he a rent, uh, landowner that rents ground out?
Yeah.
Could be, yeah, that's what it showed on Beacon was Givers. And then I called my dad and he said that we, he probably wants to rent it out, you know.
Um, and I love my job.
Oh, okay. So, because that would be, I'd be going to the east, straight into the field from the triangle. Cause yeah, the tracks and the ditch triangle, then it kind of wedges, but. So if you guys did want me to do it all, this is just explaining everything that would be done and for grand total of nineteen thousand. But sounds like Dean checked tomorrow. And I can take the cottonwoods out now, right? This was a bill to take cottonwoods out if you guys did want it done, yeah.
And I would not, I would not recommend that.
Alright, well, that's all it's got, I guess. So.
And then just keep working on that Sumac.
Yes, yeah, I'll just push them back every year, every, every two years. Yep, so, and I don't need to bill you guys for that. It'll just be the normal pass, so. I appreciate you coming and making us aware of some of this stuff though, for sure. Yeah.
Thanks, Joey.
Yep, thanks, Dean.
Joey, can I get the slideshow for the records just so they have an update in? So if we have issues later.
Can you log me out of there? You know how to do that? You have this too, and I can email that to you.
Okay, perfect.
So, bye, Joey. Yeah, for sure.
Anything else before the board?
Second.
All the favor, hi. Down for a minute, Dean?
Say again?
Give me a call back, would you?
Yes, sir, I sure can.
Thank you.
Yeah.